I'd like to call the special meeting to order. Today's March 20, 2019.
Council President, the mayor is not present. Councilman Wu is not available. They did not give me directions if they were going to be calling in. Councilman Aversa is available by phone and Councilman Sung is also available by phone. So before we take the roll call, I'd like to contact Councilman Aversa.
Eddie Aversa?
Hi, hold on. Is he here?
Yes.
Let's get up for roll call.
Okay. All right.
No problem.
Okay. Call the meeting to order.
Are we getting, are we getting Councilman's phone?
Yeah. When I call, roll call.
Okay.
Okay. The meeting is March 20th and it is, I can't see the time.
7:15.
7:15. Mayor Kranjak is absent. Councilperson Sung?
Here.
Via phone. Sabari?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Aversa? Via phone. Oh?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Here.
Borough Clerk. Everyone is present besides the three that I mentioned and Julie is absent.
Please stand for flexible. Mr. Barry, you want to lead us to the flag? First we will to the flag of the United States of America as the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the living justice of all.
Madam Clark, please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement. Oh, and I didn't find it here. You know what? I didn't, uh, do you know it by heart?
No.
I'm sorry, I have to look it up. Isn't that terrible? I didn't print it out over here. Um, I apologize for the delay. I didn't print out the Open Public Meetings Act statement.
You should keep a copy of that, yeah?
One minute. Okay. Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Thank you.
Council President, the mayor who is not available sent me an email and asked that I read a statement into the record for him. May I?
Sure.
The statement I'm about to read is not a reflection of my personal views or opinion. It is the follow, the following is a prepared statement that I was asked to read by Mayor Mario Kranjak in his absence. Good evening. Due to pre-existing family obligations, I cannot be here for this evening's hastily-called special meeting. Two things, however, that I wish to convey to everyone are: Number one, I continue to oppose any residential development on the 800 Sylvan site. We had a viable plan, and even that plan could be further enhanced to satisfy our borough's affordable housing obligations. I would never surrender this borough to a developer or the fair share housing outlets. Number two, I expect all volunteers in our borough to pass a basic background check. The coach in question failed the Little League's background check last year due to pleading guilty to assaulting a law officer last year. He hit a cop. I doubt he can now pass a background check and I do not want to expose any children, parents, coaches, officials to any danger. Do not reinstate him. He had a hearing last year and was represented by Al Wunsch when he pled guilty. Wunsch represented him at his hearing and Wunsch waived his right to appeal with a letter. But all that was before he had a campaign party for Councilmembers Sabari and Sung last October, and I suppose that is why he is on the agenda tonight. Mayor Mario Kranjak, Mayor Van Goghlecliff. And like I repeat, these are not my opinions or it is my statements. Thank you.
Point of order?
Yes.
Can, can I say something to that since I'm part of his lovely, coward statement? He couldn't show up to make it himself. Um, in no way, and, you know, am I doing anything for Anthony or anybody in town because they voted for me to represent this community. The mayor, and, yeah, I was on the council at the time, but there was a board that decided that Anthony should be suspended for two years. Um, I think what we're asking now and what is on the agenda for discussion was whether we should basically reduce that time, the time served, let's say, to, instead of waiting until January. I don't understand really how his opinion, it doesn't reflect the fact that come January, according to him, Anthony will be able to work with our children in town. So if there is a real concern, why, why does that concern only take us through January? Now, um, we haven't discussed this and it wasn't necessarily coming up for a vote today, but I'd like to make a motion that we vote to allow Anthony to go back to coaching Little League. Because, you know, you can't take a stance on something that, as far as I was concerned, wasn't done right to begin with and then say that the only reason that I'm supporting this is because he, he supported me in my campaign. First of all, it's insulting that he's insulting me that I would do such a thing because somebody had a party to say that, you know, they believe that I'm the best candidate to run for this town. So I think that we basically should vote to overturn the ordinance, and I don't know if we can do that through a resolution or not, and if we can't do that tonight, then I suggest that we get the paperwork started to take a vote on it.
Councilwoman, the discussion and update regarding the recreational coach is scheduled for later in the meeting. I, I think it might be better off waiting until we get to that point before we make any decision on the vote, but that's certainly up to you if you want to take things out of order.
I think it's best that we wait until the end of the, like, whatever it is, until the turn then.
Okay. Well, I made my statement because the mayor just made a statement and I felt the need to voice my opinion.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman. Do we, uh, do I have a motion to open to public, please?
So moved.
Second? Second.
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Anyone in the public room to speak?
Lauren Eastwood, Four Wheeler Drive. Uh, first of all, I would like to point out that you don't have a quorum. You can't make a quorum with people on the phone, and people on the phone can't participate in closed session, so this meeting is a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act. Um, I also am opposed to settling with Normandy for a massive residential development which will flood our children and send our school taxes through the sky when we could just fulfill our obligation by building our own, uh, our own affordable housing and only the units that were required to provide. Finally, I have a huge problem with the appointment of Albert Wunsch to deal with internal affairs investigations. A large portion of his practice is representing police officers. I, you can't be on both sides of the table. Either he's representing police officers or he's representing the borough in proceedings involving police officers. You can't be doing both. It's a huge ethical problem.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience to speak? Go ahead, Ms. Clark.
Yeah, it's not gonna work.
Maria Valari, 45, Jane Drive. I understand that the mayor and his family are in Florida. Um, some comments were made that he chose not to be here. Um, I agree with what Mayor Kranjak stated on the statement that Lizette just read. Um, we should definitely try to do something with the situation that we have with affordable housing. We, we do have a plan out there that I understand that we were working on and that a lot of Democrats voted for, and for now to abandon that situation, that, that resolution to allow this developer to develop 800 Sylvan Avenue is a disgrace, and anyone who votes for it needs to search their, their conscience and their soul on why they're doing it. You know, I've, I've known Albert Wunsch for a long time. I like Albert Wunsch. I was not happy with the behavior on the dais while he was up there, but that's, uh, yes, that's how we felt to behave. However, I feel that Mr. Wunsch should not be representing in, in the litigations. I mean, there were people here that he represented. I'm married to an attorney. I know that if you just have a relationship with someone or you've represented them in something, you can't represent then the opposite side against that side. It just doesn't, it doesn't fly. I don't know how you could possibly do this, people. Uh, you're opening yourself up to more litigation, more issues, and, uh, the, the anger that's expressed at every meeting really concerns me as a resident. Putting this meeting in such a short notice, the residents of this town don't even know this meeting is happening. You really need to give people time to get to these meetings. This is unfair. Yeah, you, you won and you, you got, what, 60 votes, whatever it is? There's, there's a whole other half of the town that doesn't agree with what you're doing, and they should be able to come to these meetings and voice and express their concerns about what's going on in this town. There are people building million-dollar houses right now and don't know what you guys are planning to do. How can you do that? Ask us, you know what? I keep asking you every meeting. What does everybody up there have to gain? What does everybody up there?
You can stop right now.
You do not talk to me this late time.
You will not, once again, insinuate that we are corrupt. I'm gonna tell you, you don't know what's going on with the people.
I don't know what's going on.
Do not sit there.
Do not talk to me in that way, ma'am.
Tell us how we should vote.
You, I am a resident of this town and I express my, my opinion. Do not argue with me, Mr. Barry.
I'm arguing with her. I'm responding to her comments.
Okay, so we don't need to respond?
No, I paused it.
No, actually.
Portion, uh, were you done?
No. I'll, I'll wait till after she's finished her response.
I, I did pause the time, uh, Mr. Guy, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm going to repeat it again. We all need to find out who benefits from whatever is happening. Otherwise, you would not abandon. Otherwise, you would not abandon plans that were already set in place. Why are you abandoning those plans to go forward with something that's ultimately going to hurt the residents of this town? Our taxes, we, we're always saying how happy we are and the eclipse has such low taxes. Well, you know what? It's all gonna be on you when our taxes are higher than ten to fly and every other town in the area. Thank you. That plan does not work, Mrs. Valari. That's why we're sitting and still negotiating.
Anyone else?
I'm sure it's my opinion. I'm the one up here in closed session. Who knows what's going on?
That's Thomas Morris, this is 26 John Street, Van Goghlecliff. I can understand the frustration from Maria Valari, but we also have frustration with the first plan. I didn't agree with the first plan. I don't agree they should knock down this building, fire departments and everything else, move stuff around. It didn't work, as far as I'm concerned, as far as I see it. Everybody has an opinion. But I think that no matter who's in control or whatever, we have to get the best deal possible for the town, and that's all we can strive for. We all live in town, so I don't think anybody is trying to sell the town down the road. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. How are you?
Good, how are you? Hello, pass, ma'am? I'm a first woman.
What do you have over there?
Very important. Was that being for the afternoon?
Thank you.
P L A, Ascot, 10th and Eighth Street. Regarding the last meeting we had regarding the Clifton Terrace residents and the brownstone park, my concern with them was that we can add them to the ordinance for, uh, residents only. My concern was for them was, because I had the same situation on my feet for the past 33 years. Everything's resident only parking, yet when we call the police because they can't, because people park and go to New York, they come down, we can't do anything because it's 10:00 PM to 10:00 AM. Well, I didn't have the ordinance in front of me. Fortunately, Mrs. Dyer did, and when I went back and looked further, yeah, my street's on that same ordinance, uh, which is 30, 13, 312 dash 6. Only problem is, I did a little driving around. You have five streets on that ordinance that actually have the sign. Uh, you have two streets that aren't on the ordinance that have the sign and a number of them on that ordinance that don't have the sign. So no one in town knows that we have that ordinance. It's not enforced and it's not posted, so somebody missed a vote. Could we arrange to get that taken care of? And also, could we arrange perhaps, do that townwide so the rest of the residents don't have to go through this? It, it might help the police not to have to run constantly to check out suspicious cars that are, that are everywhere. I'm sure everyone would be on board for that. It's supposed to also be getting, according to the ordinance, four visitor permits? I've lived on the street I'm on for 33 years. I lived on another street for 20, 22 years. I've never heard of it, let alone have I ever seen one. I don't know, has anyone, have you ever seen one? I doubt it.
You have to apply it.
No, no, no. It says that they give it to you. I have the permit on my car where you have all apply for that. They give four residential permits per household for guests. Never seen it, never heard of it. So, someone missed it.
Okay, we'll look into it.
Okay. And if we could get those signs up, that's what they did in Clifton Terrace, because the 10:00 PM, the 10:00 AM wasn't gonna help, which was what my impression was. So, and also maybe they want to raise the, the ticket to $50 because $25 is nothing if they park and go across the bridge. They're putting, they're saving the $10.
Right.
It's not worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? Go ahead, Ms. Dyer.
Christine, Senator, 36 Rock Road. Uh, to the mayor's opening statement, first of all, my husband did not hit a cop or even touch the cop. What happened was a piece of glass broke from a window and a small piece hit the cop in the face. So I just want to put that on record that he'd never physically touched a police officer, so that's not the case. The mayor Kranjak lied in that statement.
Anyone else from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, uh, do I have a motion? Go ahead. This is my mom.
Yeah.
Good evening. Carol McFarrel, 489 Summit Street. Um, Mr. Marinello, to, good evening. Um, I would like to believe that if you are aware that you're gonna be constituting a meeting when you don't have a quorum and a violation of the law, that you would not proceed. It is my understanding from working with numerous past attorneys, Fred Semerall being the first one that taught me, you need four members present. You cannot call him. A phone call does not constitute a quorum. Mrs. Oh, you don't have a quorum for this meeting. You have one, two, three members. It's unfortunate. I'm sorry. I mean, you always did your time if you don't have the fourth person. You don't have a fourth person, and a phone call does not constitute a quorum. I can't hear you, sir.
I don't want to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Okay. So if you are going to take the legal position, then I'm asking that you put on the record as the borough attorney, that is, your understanding of the law, that you can, a phone call does? This way, if it turns out that you're wrong, unfortunately, everything will be null and void.
Whether I'm right or wrong, if, whatever it is, is the way it's gonna be. It doesn't make any difference whether I say it on the record or not.
Well, you need to say it on the record, sir. You have, you have people here, and whether or not you have a quorum, this is not a matter of debate. You're the borough attorney.
That's right.
And you need to say, do you have a quorum? And I'm asking you, do you have a quorum?
You can have your five minutes to speak.
Okay, but I'm, I, I want you, I'm asking.
I'm not gonna answer, I'm not gonna interrupt anymore. You just go ahead.
Okay, but I'm asking this council, I want to know if you have a quorum. As residents, you have a right to know that. Number two, Mr. Marinello, you have Mr. Wunsch here being appointed for all of these litigations. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and God knows how many IAs. 15,000 a pop. That's 150,000. We've already paid them 75. I, I don't understand, um, many of these, which I will count for you. Uh, one, uh, one or two. I already have JIP attorneys. So when I was at the Tracy versus Borough Van Goghlecliff, um, lawsuit, uh, hearing, and Mr. Wunsch was there along with Mr. Ruttenberg, who was appointed special counsel. Mr. Barry's so concerned about finances and you have two attorneys there. I don't understand why. So, um, it's never been done in the past? That's number one. Number two, Mr. Wunsch has some very serious conflicts, sir. I heard Ms. Eastwood bring this to your attention. I've heard the tapes. Mr. Wunsch is making decisions about which tapes should be released or not, and his former client, Captain Brian Murphy, is on some of those tapes. That's a conflict of interest, sir. He should not be weighing in on those. I'm bringing that to your attention. Okay? So I'd like to know if Mr. Wunsch is allowed to represent those matters where he had his client, and that is on those tapes. I'm asking you the question.
You yielding the rest of your time?
Yes.
Okay. I have reviewed these matters with Mr. Wunsch. Mr. Wunsch?
I'm asking you, not Mr. Wunsch. Mr. Wunsch does not, he doesn't listen to, there's, there's the law and then there's the law by Wunsch, so I'm asking you, sir.
Well, I, obviously, I don't disagree with appointing Mr. Wunsch to continue and finish these actions or else. I would have voiced that to my clients, who are the people here on the council. So obviously, I feel it's okay.
So if his client, I just want to make sure, my question is, if his client is on those tapes and he's weighing in, whether or not those tapes, you see?
My understanding is that the judge is ultimately deciding which tapes are or are not public, not Mr. Wunsch on his own.
Well, he, but he made a privilege log, sir.
That's okay. He's allowed to make it, and if somebody questions it, the court will review it and make a determination as to whether or not they should be released.
Okay, but so.
That's the process that's in place for those tapes.
I'm well aware of it, sir. I was in court. But your position is that if his client's on those tapes, you're okay with him making those privilege logs up?
I don't, I probably would.
You don't find that to be a conflict of?
He's not, as far as I know, he hasn't taken any position that statements his client, his former client, if that was indeed the case, made his attorney-client privilege with him.
Okay. And the internal, I see internal pending, internal affairs.
Right.
You're okay with that?
Well, you've already yielded your.
But cover the matters. I understand.
I already told you.
Okay. And the fact that, uh, is this a legal meeting?
You're welcome to sit down. You already yielded your time.
I asked, but I asked for the answer and my time.
I'm not answering your question.
So you're refusing to answer, Ms. Oh?
No, I'm having the meeting. You can judge from that what you will.
This is an illegal meeting, guys. It's illegal. You need four people. Gloria, you need four people.
Anyone else from the audience? Ms. Dyer?
Karen Geiger, 270 Alfred Street. Um, just one comment about the comments that were made on the affordable housing litigation. Uh, one, Mrs. Sabari is in fact the president of a real estate development corporation, and Mrs. Valari, your snide comments to that effect in, from the audience where you said that that was evident, that she had a conflict, is quite the contrary. Mrs. Sabari understands corporate development. She knows how to evaluate profit motive in corporate development. She understands residential versus corporate development, and as a resident, I feel privileged that she is up there and part of the team. And number two, on the affordable housing litigation, I do have one question, and this is to Mrs. Sabari. If it's possible for you to talk about this in public at this time, and I realize that according to the court papers, the reason for this meeting and the discussion on affordable housing has to do with documents that have to go back to the court by the 22nd of March, which is a timetable pursuant to the court. But what I would like to know is, you just said that, um, you believe that the plan is as submitted by, as developed by the prior mayor and council and submitted, um, by this council doesn't work. Um, are you able to tell us any of the reasons why?
Not at this time that we're having this meeting because, and it is short notice, but we do need to continue our discussions. No definite decisions have been made, and we are constantly working on this. This is what I live and sleep every single day, so whatever, you know, we as a council do, it will only be to the benefit of the residents. And there is no definite what's being done here, so I don't understand why all of this hoopla about us giving up anything because no final decisions have been made.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Geiger. Anyone else? Seeing and hearing none, uh, do I have a motion to close? So move. Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, um.
You want to go to pause or will the other ones up?
Do I have a motion to go into closed session? So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Want to read it?
Okay.
Resolution 19103, where as the mayor and council of the borough Van Goghlecliff has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters. Whereas the minutes of this closed session will remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act or shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the borough attorney. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the borough Van Goghlecliff will go into closed session for the following matters as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act. Regarding Borough Van Goghlecliff, doc at number B E R L 6119-15. 800 Sylvan Avenue LLC versus Borough Van Goghlecliff, mayor and council and planning board, doc at B E R L 6918. And number three, 800 Sylvan Avenue LLC versus Planning Board, doc at number B E R L 908817. That is it. Okay. I'm going to, uh, disconnect. Thank you. We'll call you once we're done.
Do I have a motion to come out of closed session?
So move.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Uh, Council President, I'd like to report that while we were in closed session, Councilman Jimmy Sung arrived at 9:30 and Councilman Eddie Aversa arrived at 10:10 into closed session.
Thank you. Uh, okay. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? I have the record and I'm allowed to say that on the record. Can I ask you something about? No, you're allowed to say that on the Open Public Meetings Act.
You already said it, though.
Okay.
We will reflect it again.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, minutes.
Next on the agenda, we have minutes from closed session, January 8th, 2018, March 20th, 2018, September 26th, 2018, and December 5th, 2018.
Need a motion?
Do I have a motion? So move. Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Okay, uh, two that can't vote. All right. Uh, Councilperson Sung?
Uh, State.
Sabari, from State. Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, next on the agenda is the resolutions, um, nineteen dash one oh four. We have payment of claims, uh, finance due, and order of micros.
So move. You got to read it.
Motion to, uh, payment of claims, March fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen through March twentieth, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of two million, three forty-nine, eight sixty-one point eighty-three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Local.
Local?
Councilperson Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes. Resolution nineteen dash one oh five, transfer appropriation reserved. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second. I'm sorry, who moved it?
I did.
And Aversa.
And second.
Local?
Councilperson Aversa?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I did it backwards. Okay. Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa? And O?
Yes.
Okay.
Resolution nineteen dash one oh six, assign litigation matters to special counsel. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Local?
Councilperson Song?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Aversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Um, last on the agenda, we have discussion, update our recreation code.
Point of order?
Yes, councilwoman.
I'd like to make a motion to reduce the suspension of Anthony Senator to Little League to one year and allow the Little League to decide whether they would entertain bringing him back on board.
Um, I would actually.
However you write that up.
Okay. Um, I'd like to make a recommendation or, uh, I'd like to ask Mr. Senator if he wants to, uh, come up here and make a statement.
Yes, I will first.
Okay.
Look, before you speak, Mr. Senator, I want to write down what your motion was. Can you?
Okay. My motion is to reduce the suspension to one year and allow Little League to decide if he can coach again.
And, okay, to, so I'm going to, I think for purposes of being clear, is a motion to reduce the suspension to time served, so it will be through today's date. So I don't know if exactly it's one year.
Okay.
And to, um.
I don't know if we have to say to send it back to Little League.
No, but, uh, uh, motion. And to allow Little League to decide Mr. Senator's S E N A T R E, uh, status as a coach or reinstatement as a coach. That would give them the authority to, uh, make that decision. And your, the suspension previously issued would no longer be an impediment to that. But, but I know we're not voting on it, but I just want to make sure I've got it written and out correctly so we can have it done for the record. I'm sorry, you can come on up.
May I repeat it?
Sure.
Reduce the suspension to time served to today's date.
Right.
To allow Little League to decide, Mr., to decide if Mr. Senator may be reinstated as a coach.
Right.
You can come up here.
Every time he comes up, we start talking about it again.
Go ahead, you can have a seat. Just say your name and your name for the record.
Anthony Senator, 36 Rock Road. Um, Englecliffs. First, I would like to thank the mayor and council for, um, entertaining this, um, request to reduce or commute my punishment for, uh, the actions that, um, that I caused, uh, on, on July third, uh, two thousand seventeen. Um, an incident arose out of, uh, a comment, a sexually explicit comment was made to my wife. I confronted the gentleman. I got into a fistfight with him. And then, um, several hours later, about six hours later, five o'clock in the morning, um, you know, ten police officers wanted to arrest me and I was not willing to be arrested. I tried to explain to them the situation. I, being a former police officer myself for, um, ninety-two to two thousand, I know of the position I put them in, um, I'm extremely sorry for it. Um, since that incident, nothing has happened at all. The Superior Court judge gave me a one-year probation and commuted my probation to six months because I think she understood the situation as well. Um, I do understand, um, the decision that the board is making is not whether or not I'm fit to coach the kids, but rather just to reduce or commute the sentence here. And that the final judgment will be made by the Little League whether or not they want me back or not. Um, as far as recreation, I hope that, I mean, there's not a board or, actually, I don't know if the rec board could decide to have me back or not, but I would request that that be, uh, part of this also. I don't know. And I know the wording of the ordinance, I know very well at this point, states Little League and therefore there's a little, uh, like conflict there, you know? I'm not sure. I know the Little League is one entity and the recs are another entity, but the way the ordinance is written, it's, it states Little League. And that's why the Little League refused to make a judgment on this last year because of that, you know, it, it states Little League. So, you know, I went before a board last year and they gave me a sentence to, uh, um, to the end of two thousand nineteen on a suspension. And, you know, um, since then, you know, I've reflected on what I did. I was extremely wrong. Um, it didn't have anything to do with children. It had to do with an adult. It was a poor decision. And I paid for it seriously by not being able to coach the state championship team that I was actually one of the three coaches prior to that going. So I, I paid a pretty heavy price. Um, I don't know what I could do to, uh, ensure that you guys would be comfortable with me coaching again. Um, I'm willing to listen to any suggestions and do anything that, um, I can do to, you know, facilitate you guys or reducing or committing to the suspension.
Just to speak a little bit to what Mr. Senator is saying about the ordinance. The ordinance on this issue is really screwed up. And, um, there's actually two sections that are back to back that appear to try and regulate the same behavior, but it's extremely exceedingly confusing. And the process in which someone, uh, is, is stripped of their ability to coach and what they're, who they go before and how it, how it comes about is very confusing. And I think it's because, uh, although I wasn't here in two thousand and seven when the ordinance was passed to amend the prior ordinance, it was called a repeal. And then if you read it, it's clear that what they were intending to do was to amend it and replace it. But instead, the code book just places them next to each other as two separate ordinances trying to deal with the same issue. So there is definitely a lot of confusion in there. And at some point in time, I would suggest that you, uh, ask my office to rewrite that section because this confusion, we don't want this confusion to happen in the past. Both sections, however, do provide for a, uh, for someone not being allowed to coach, at least until they've gone through the hearing process, for the type of violation that Mr. Senator was charged with. So under either one, it would have still resulted in the same place. But the mechanism to have it addressed by this council or by a committee is totally different depending on which section you look at. So there's definitely some confusion in there that I think we should look at in, uh, in the future about.
Sir, sir, pardon me. I just wanted to add that I know a lot of talk has been placed out there that I physically assaulted a police officer. That is the farthest thing from the truth. I've never kicked, punched, touched a police officer. I broke the car window and a piece of glass apparently hit the officer in the eye. Um, and, you know, as a police officer, you touch a police officer, it's, it's an assault. So it was an accident and, and I, if I beat up a police officer physically, the judge would have threw me in jail. She even saw that it was an accident out of a, uh, you know, I got myself, I was intoxicated. I came home. I was very upset about what happened. And, you know, when fifteen police officers shot into the house, you know, and they slammed me to the ground, you know? And me being a former police officer and knowing the law, a simple assault is no mandatory arrest. If they could have just took my, my license and I could have came down in the morning, which is what I asked her to do because my kids were in the house. And my wife, you know, she, you know, I just, I asked her to let me come down in the morning. They refused to do that and it just escalated from there. You know, I love the kids from Englecliffs. Prior to that incident, I think I coached thirty-five different teams that I could, I, I know without incident with anybody. Um, I, I brought forward a petition of eighty signatures from parents of kids that I coached. Obviously, there's going to be some people that are not a hundred percent with me. I, I understand that. It's impossible to get everybody to agree with, you know, with you, you know?
Talking to the council, we know.
Well, I know some people who were elected with fifty percent of the people against it, you know? You know, so it's impossible to get people, you know, everybody. I, I did the best I could and, you know, I, I would ask you to place your trust back in me and I'd like to continue working with the kids. And tonight I was at the upper school with five other fathers. We opened the school just to let the kids play basketball. You know, that's what I was doing tonight.
Right. Anthony, I, I just want, want to be clear that the motion is to send it back to Little League. We really don't control whether the Little League.
Totally understand.
Will bring you back on board.
Totally understand.
Tony, would you be willing to, is he likely to indemnify the town? I mean, he could, he could, uh, I mean, that wasn't part of the motion. You could change the motion to include that, that if, in the event he, he does coach again in the town, uh, that he would agree to indemnify and hold the borough harmless in the event of an incident that.
I have no problem with that because, you know, um, Mr. Aversa, I have no problem with it.
Right.
You know, I, I've spoken directly to the president, the vice president, and they basically, you know, they basically told me, like, Tony, we didn't suspend you last year, so we can't commute the sentence or reduce the, the punishment. But that doesn't mean that if the town, you know, reduce that, that we're going to take you back. You know, they're, we're definitely going to vote on it.
Right.
So they told me straight out what's going to happen.
Do you, I guess, add is your motion to, or your amendment to our motion to, uh, add a provision that in the event Mr. Senator goes back to coaching, that he would enter into an agreement that would indemnify and hold the borough harmless in the event that something happens?
Sure. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I, I think that's.
I don't, I don't have a problem.
Leave some of the concerns, um, that the mayor has for the period of, from today until January, if that's the date when he will be allowed to go back to coaching.
By the way, I think that's what we're talking about anyway because after his time is up, he's still going to be allowed to coach, so we're not going to be in any different situation, in my opinion.
That's, that's exactly my, my, that's why I asked for it because to me personally, I don't know what can change from now until then. I mean, if, if I, if I can't coach now, why can I coach in January? It just, this doesn't make any sense to me. You know, I, I understand, I do understand that this is what they, the punishment I, I, you know, received and I accepted it with full responsibility. I just feel that at this point, I learned my lesson, you know, and, you know.
Can I ask you a question? So have the state, have you gone through your probation and that's done in over?
Done. I know, I, I was told that Mayor Pranjak, um, in, uh, in public forum stated that I was being sued by the police, totally untrue. None of it's, the officer was not hurt.
So you finished your probation.
Done.
So the state gave you a year and six months served.
Your termination. Right.
So was the state's, the judicial system's.
By their request.
That six months was, uh, sufficient.
Yes, and, and, and that, by their request, not my request.
Okay.
They told me, Tony, you don't need to be here anymore. Put file a motion to be let off early. And I did, and the judge let me off early.
Okay. Thank you.
At their request, not mine.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
One other, uh, one quick question. Are you coaching other sports, Tony?
Probably no, but, but to be quite honest with you, um, that was approached in December by the rec board. And they stated that one of the fathers just quit the day before the first game. You have to coach the team. I said, I can't. I'm on suspension. I can't do it. So I don't want to name names now. I said, I said, you speak to Mayor Pranjak and if he okay's it, then I'll do it. So now I don't know if the conversation took place. I can't say that he said yes. I can't say he said no. I don't even know if he told Mayor Pranjak. But what I can testify to is that I was told that it was okay. So I, I wound up coaching the seventh and eighth grade basketball team for the one team. But I was concerned about it because I was concerned that it was, like, I was purposely not obeying my punishment. But they approached me and, and, you know, they, they said, look, we have no one else to coach this team. You have to do this.
That's, that's a problem in this town.
So I, I just, I said, listen, I'll do it, but I don't want to be, I don't want this being held against me. You know, I don't want it to look like I, I'm not trying to obey the punishment.
Can I assume that you, there were no incidents during?
No, I, and no, not. I was asked to coach the All-Star team after the game, after the season by that, which I did.
Okay.
So.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you.
So we have that motion on the.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Sabari. And then it was amended by Councilman Aversa.
All right.
So is that your second?
We need a second on the amended motion.
Second.
So amended motion, second. Uh, can I, may I take a roll call?